Good evening. Good evening. Time is now six thirty P M on Monday, June twenty four, twenty twenty four, and I call this open meeting of the Lexington Select Board to order. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format via Zoom. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their devices by clicking on the link posted with the agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. We are also being broadcast live and for future on demand viewing by Lex Media. All materials provided to members of the board are also made available to the public. Members of the board are in person this evening. Doug sent you the chair. On my right is Joe Pato. On his right is Vice Chair Jill Hay. On my left is Susie Barry. On her left is Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff this evening is Deputy Town Manager Kelly Axel and Select Board Executive Clerk Kim Katzenbeck. Our Town Manager Jim Lloyd unable to join us this evening. First item on the agenda is an executive session item. I move that we enter into executive session under exemption six to consider the value of real property with respect to parcel sixty eight dash forty four located on Lowell Street. Further, as Chair, I declare that an open meeting on this item may have a detrimental effect on the town bargaining position. Further, the Select Board will reconvene in open session at approximately six forty five P M after the executive session has concluded. It may be earlier than that, but likely to be six forty five. By a roll call vote to enter into executive session is Hay.
Yes.
Mr. Pato.
Yes.
My vote is yes, and Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Mr. Sandin.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We are now in executive session.
Doug. Email. Check. I didn't put it on the pad there, but I copied you on the email for the exec session.
To Kim. Oh, God. Okay, I want to make sure everything's working. It sounds like the microphone is wrong. Okay, welcome back to our open session portion of the meeting. For those that are just joining us, we were in an executive session at the beginning of the meeting for a few very brief moments. We will open the floor to general public comment. As we begin, I'd like to remind everyone that we are all neighbors and working together in our community's best interest. I ask that all comments be made with civility and with respect and without casting aspersions or references to motives. Open public comments are for items that are not otherwise covered on tonight's agenda. Public comments will be allowed for ten minutes, and each speaker is limited to two minutes. Members of the board will neither comment nor respond other than to perhaps ask clarifying questions. Remote attendees who have dialed in by telephone, please press star nine or click on the raise hand button on Zoom. If you're joining us in person, please feel free to approach the microphone. When you're recognized to speak, please state your name, address, and any relevant boards or committee affiliations. So anyone who wishes to speak in public comment, please stand up on the microphone or raise your hand. And sir, if you want to start. If you can tap it just to make sure. No, it's not. There's a button on the top. If you want to push the button toward you. Thank you. And you'll have, if you could state your name and address, you got two minutes.
Sure. I've timed it, so I should make it. Okay, my name is Lance Bradley. I live at twenty four Longfellow Road. And what I'd like to do is talk about the Lexington High School project scope. I sent an email earlier to the Select Board and the Town Manager regarding the subject. What I want to do now is present a few more thoughts on the subject. As a licensed engineer who has designed and built many projects, I can tell you if you do not have the scope clearly defined at the beginning of the project, you are asking for problems. I've attended a few of the high school meetings, and what I have never heard discussed is a number of possible students living in the National Guard Armory, ALOFT, and Element Hotels. If the town has a firm number from the state, then I'll stop right here now. Okay? If not, I believe this is what we should do. We need to invite the governor and our two state reps and possibly the U.S. rep to a town meeting where this can be discussed openly. The questions that need to be answered are, how long will the state be placing students in these facilities? Are there now any contracts with these facilities, and if so, for how long? If there's, is there a limit on the number of students that will be placed in these facilities or elsewhere in the town of Lexington? As stated in the email I sent earlier, if the state places between two hundred sixty nine, which is the capacity of those two hotels, to over three hundred, seven hundred students, depending if there's one child to three children in those hotel rooms, that could easily push the cost of the high school up another two hundred million dollars. It could also dramatically affect the footprint of the school. And if the state places a large number of students with only a short notice to the town, it could cause serious problems. Okay, what I think, I am sure you understand the need for this information, and you will not hesitate to send a letter to the state requesting it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, and online, Don McKenna. If you can unmute, please state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Don McKenna, nine Hancock Street. I won't take the two minutes, but I did want to report that as I continue to be concerned about the rotary that's been put in front of our house this past week, the yield signs were knocked down by a car. And more importantly, someone drove over the middle, and again, for the second time that I've observed, ran right over the water spigot, which, as I indicated, shouldn't be up that high. They look awful. And I will just add that I'm very disappointed that the board has allowed the kind of landscaping that's in there, which is full of weeds. It's not very attractive, and it detracts from the battleground. So I, I'm sorry to keep bringing this to you, but I still haven't heard any process or timeline for really reviewing this. And I continue to witness and see the remnants of problems there, so I just wanted to be sure that you had them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Okay, colleagues, no more folks either in line or in person or on Zoom. We're going to move on to our next item, which is for the Select Board Concerns and Liaison Reports. Tonight, we did have written comments from Ms. Hay in our packet. And are there any other additional verbal comments that board members want to make?
Two typos in mine. I just want to correct.
Ms. Barry.
I just wanted to follow up. Following the indefinite postponement of the article to invite the royal family to the two hundred fiftieth celebration next year, we did a community listening session on June twelfth at the Community Center Dining Room. It was attended by seven members from the community. So the two fifty Commission will meet this Wednesday to go over what we heard and to formulate a recommendation to bring to this board for approval sometime, hopefully. I'm not sure when it's on the agenda, but it will be coming soon.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Ms. Hay.
I just want, I just wanted to correct that it is the magic work plan, not workplace. And it's FY twenty five, the budget for the noise regulation survey. And that was something that came out of the fact that I kept asking if other communities had working policies, and no one did. So we agreed that that would be worthwhile expenditure of our joint money to have some professional help to do that. So I will, as I said, coordinate with the noise committee to make sure they can be part of that conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Great. Ms. Axel, is there a Town Managers' Report this evening?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of items, which I'll give more information in this week's weekly update, but I did want to let the board know of a couple of achievements. Tricia Malatesta from Engineering was awarded a special achievement award by the New England American Public Works Association Chapter. She coordinates project information. She's a mentor in the office and fosters a strong and enjoyable team environment. I will give you more information about her award in the weekly update. And also Dave Pentzner, the director, has been appointed to the American Public Works Association Board of Directors and will serve as its technical director for fleet and facilities. So that's really exciting. And then I also wanted to mention Karen Taylor, Tyler, excuse me, our Veteran Services Officer, was given three awards from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts honoring her service, dedication, and service to her country, and recognizing her leadership that empowers women. So I will share those with the board on Friday as well. More information about that. And I also wanted to mention that the parklet was installed already, so I wanted to give you that information.
Thank you, Ms. Axel. And just because you mentioned the parklet, we did receive some feedback on the parklet. We may or may not have that in a future agenda. I think we'll, you know, I just wanted to make sure the colleagues on the board heard that we did get feedback on that installation and that it wasn't maybe some consensus amongst the businesses of what the location was. So, anyway, for a future agenda item, perhaps. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, the consent agenda this evening has nine items on it. The first is for Lexington Housing Assistance Board, Lexed Property Acceptance of Thirty One Fletcher Ave., Unit fourteen. Second is for the Affordable Housing Trust to correct term ending months and days for, to be April thirty, twenty twenty five, for three members, William Erickson, Linda Proznitz, and Tiffany Payne. Further, a reappointment to a term ending April thirty, twenty twenty six, for Elaine Tong and Mark Sandin. Next, the third item is to approve Select Board Meeting Minutes for May twentieth, May twenty second, and May, sorry, and June third, twenty twenty four. Fourth is to approve Select Board Committee Appointments for the Lexington Center Committee for Kathleen McDonald. Fifth is to approve Select Board Committee Reappointments, first for the Keeper of the Lockup Police Chief McLean, Executive Clerk Kim Katzenbeck, Town Celebrations Committee, William Glenn Bassett, Sarice Jalalian, Julianne Miller, and Sandra Pogorski. The Town Celebration Subcommittee Appointments, or Reappointments for Sudah, Fala Zurian, Stephen D. Cole Junior, E. Fangong, David Grable, Bonnie Karshpong, E. Ashley Rooney, Marella Vasso, Huma Wassam, Pamela Winters, and Hong Shi. Finally, Magic, Men and Man Advisory Group on Interlocal Coordination, which is also known as Magic, Jill Hay. Sixth item is to accept Select Board Committee Resignations, first for the Transportation Advisory Committee, Jonathan Schwartz. Second is Lexington Human Rights Committee, Lois Brush. And seventh item on the agenda is to approve Town Manager Committee Appointments and Reappointments. Appointment to the Council on Aging, Janet Perry. Reappointment to the Youth Commission, both James Athens and Deborah Haggins. Our eighth item is a one-day liquor license for Gal Ray House at seven twenty Mass Ave for their first Friday's event. The ninth is a one-day liquor license for the Lexington Friends of the Arts, DBA Monroe Center for the Arts, for a gallery reception. Do any board members wish to have items removed from consent to be considered individually? Hey, any other questions or comments from board members on any of these items? Okay, seeing none, I move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Get moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none is, it is unanimous, five to zero. Okay, our third, colleagues, I do want to alert you to a change in order of items tonight. I would like to swap item six and item two. Town Council's with us this evening for several items, and I thought it might make sense to not have him sit through our discussion of our annual report. So we will move item six to be the second item. Okay, our first item on the agenda this evening is for the board to review and approve recommended, excuse me, recommended amendments to H three seven seven five regarding the Lexington Housing Assistance Board, Lex Ave. We, I'm going to actually turn this over to Ms. Hay. Do you want to start the process on this? I know you had feedback, and I know we have Town Council with us as well. But I'll let you start because I think what else was going to be here?
Just, just briefly, and I don't, do you see? John, no, okay. There was a, it was not clear whether anybody from Lex Ave was able to be here this evening. So just briefly, this is really technical corrections. The, we submitted after town meeting, and the Senate and House Counsel reviewed the document. The Senate Counsel had some concerns about, they had also submitted to Department of Local Services, and their counsel actually had a few technical concerns, and they basically gave Lex Ave the choice of going forward with it with the recognition that when it got to the governor's desk, DLS may say, well, we don't really think you should sign it, or making these technical corrections. So the decision was to make the technical corrections, and Mr. Macario is actually, on our behalf, negotiated with the counsel for the Senate, and everybody was in agreement, including the, the board and the executive director of Lex Ave. So there is no opposition or concern about this. Most of it is technical, but essentially the concerns, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Macario, but in essence, beyond technical things, it really came down to where was municipal money going, and could we guarantee that it would only be going towards affordable housing? Lex Ave, as we all know, is sort of a unicorn, and so they just weren't familiar with our, you know, structure. So that's really all this is about.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Mr. Macario, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I, I think Ms. Ms. Hay got it perfectly right.
Okay. Excellent. Colleagues, this is a sort of next step in our process for this Lex Ave becoming independent. Any questions or comments any board members would like to add? Okay, are there any comments or questions from members of the public? If you're joining us in person, please approach the microphone. Otherwise, online, if you can press the raise hand button on Zoom or press star nine to be recognized. Okay, seeing no one on Zoom or in person, I move that the board approve the changes proposed to the home rule legislation regarding Lex Ave's transition to a separate nonprofit entity in the form provided in the packet, and to permit the legislature and the governor to make other non-substantive changes to format or clerical edits prior to passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. It is unanimous, five to zero. Okay, going on to our sixth item, which is, get there. Our sixth item on the agenda, which we are taking up second, is for the board to review and approve updates to the Restaurant, Events, Space, and Craft Beverage Establishment Alcoholic Beverage License Regulations. That's a mouthful. Attached to the packet was the twenty ten, which is the current policy, and the twenty twenty four proposed revised policy. There was also a red line draft of the differences between the two policies and a section by section high level review of the proposed changes. Ms. Katzenback is Sandia Ayer, our Economic Development Director here. Now, she probably did not realize that it was this early. Yes, that was the one downfall of making it.
Yeah.
Us trying to be efficient with Town Council's time. So while we, before I get to questions, I just want to comment that, that we have seen this item on our agenda before recently, and we went through this. This is in as a result of some changes that happened at town meeting. If you want to point out that it's been mentioned at our board about alcohol policies in general, and why do we have four policies, and can we make this one policy? Because there's a lot of duplicated language in the policies. We have alcohol regulations for clubs, which was last updated in twenty ten, alcohol regulations for package stores, which was updated in two thousand nineteen, and then the alcohol regulation enforcement policy, which is also from two thousand ten. So the plan, the urgency of doing this sort of now versus waiting till we collect, you know, collaborate on all those four policies is that it takes time, and there's some interest in the community about approaching the board for one of these new licenses. So with all of that said, I'm going to take any questions and comments.
Yes, and dear Sandia is now two.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. Ms. Ayer, if you can unmute and join us, we are talking about the updates to the Restaurant, Events, Space, and Craft Beverage Establishment Regulations.
Good evening. I'm here, and I just wanted to present the, the last meeting that we presented to the board, the board wanted to understand what are the differences between what was presented in two thousand ten versus twenty twenty four policy in the packet. The differences in the purpose, general requirements, the application process, as well as the conditions have been detailed, and some of the major things that this new policy addresses is that it's not just for food service, but also the alcohol beverage licenses would be issued. And, you know, the Select Board would be authorized to issue the alcoholic beverage licenses and regulate the licenses. And there are three separate categories in which they, they would be issued, the event spaces, craft beverage establishments, and not just the restaurants. We still have the restaurant as eighteen seats or more as the capacity with the waitstaff, but rest of the policy is, is similar to what we had in two thousand ten. One other, in the general conditions, there are some, some additional requirements that have been detailed with a lot of feedback. We've also added the one oh five, one, one zero five C M R five ninety food code, as well as Lexington's bylaw and regulations, which helps us address other bylaws and regulations as, as Mr. Lucenti started with, you know, there are several other regulations and bylaws. We definitely wanted to have that highlighted in the new policy. So those, those are the changes. I'm happy to answer any questions. I also believe there was a question in, in the last Select Board item about, about a specific language, and it seems that if, if there are any further questions about it, we are happy to have, you know, more answers about it. But basically, we reached out to the Town Council, and the Town Council has confirmed that the way it is written is, you know, the, the specific point, which was to have a contact at all times at the premises when, when the business is open, and if the manager is not there, who would be responsible? So that, that particular question has been addressed within the policy as well. So those are, those are pretty much the details and updates that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ayer. Appreciate that, walking us through that. Colleagues, Ms. Hay.
And just briefly, since Ms. Ayer raised it, that was my point about the, the additional person and the language in the policy. And this goes much more to our practice than actually the policy. So Ms. Katzenback and I have discussed it, but the policy does state in, you know, to be Roman two and three, that the duly certified manager or alternate also duly certified. And that was just my concern, that I don't think that we have been actually going through a certification of who the alternate is. So that's on us, not on the policy, that we need to request that our licensees provide us with the information, since we are asserting that we know who the, you know, that these people meet the qualifications. And there are specific standards in the policy and in the ADCC regs for who can be duly certified. So I just think to do our due diligence, we need to be collecting that information. So again, I have no problem with the policy at all. I think it's well done. And Ms. Ayer, in particular, I really appreciated that side by side comparison in response to our questions last time.
Thank you. That was done by the town manager.
Well, I still really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hay. And I will point out that the language in the package store regulations, the exact same verbiage, so we do need to fix, again.
Actually, we don't need to fix the language. We need to fix the practice.
Correct, yes, yeah. Are there any further questions, Ms. Barry?
So I resolved my question, but I just want to point out in the side by side and looking at the document, that twenty ten specifically had exclusions for fast food, and that no longer applies.
Mr. Pato.
Right, because the zoning bylaws changed to eliminate the definition of fast foods. There are no longer any.
Ms. Barry, just one point. You didn't have a question.
You're not just pointing it out to us and to anyone who's watching.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions or comments from members of the board? Okay, I'm going to take any comments or questions from members of the audience. If you've dialed in by phone, please press star nine. If you're on Zoom, please click on the raise hand button, or if you're in person, please feel free to approach the microphone. Okay, seeing no one up for that, I assume colleagues are comfortable with all the changes and the multiple revisions of this. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty four Restaurant, Events, Space, and Craft Beverage Establishment Alcoholic Beverage License Regulations as proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying no. Okay, hearing none, the motion is passed unanimously, five to zero. And I want to thank Ms. Ayer. I would also like to add that we will revisit the four different policies together, or perhaps bring that back in the next few months. Okay, we're going to move back to our, our previous order of the agenda. We're going to move on to our third item.
Second.
No, actually, no, the second item is actually going to be at the end of the meeting. So we're swapping six and two. Yeah. So we're going to move on to what was actually the third item, which is for the board to discuss and approve Lex Media budgeting and contract extension. We're both being joined by Rita Bishini of the Communications Advisory Committee, who will be making the presentation on this item. Rita, if you want to come up here, and sit right next to Kim.
The dressing room.
You knew.
Rita, if you don't mind pushing on the button on the microphone and turn it on, a green light will appear. Thank you.
All right. That better?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Rita Bishini, member of the Communications Advisory Committee, and today is the second of two presentations regarding Lex Media. Last week, you heard from Lex Florence, the center who's here, Lex Media staff, about the work that they've been doing for the town, the services they've been providing. And what I'm here to discuss with the Select Board today is really our options to renew the agreement that we have with Lex Media for the next two years. The current agreement ends at the end of June, so coming up very soon. And we are looking at a renewal of two more years to continue Lex Media to provide services to the town. Let me start with a very quick recap, some background here, which I'm guessing most of you probably you are familiar with, but it might just help recall some things. So I'm just going to take a few minutes to go over a few facts here. From each of our three cable providers in town, we get five percent of the cable revenue, and that's what we label as peg revenue. And due to cord cutting in Lexington, but across the country essentially, that revenue that we've been getting from the cable providers has been declining year over year. Over the last, I would say, six to eight years, that decline has been approximately four to five percent a year. So that revenue continues to go down year over year. Our expenses, even if we hold staffing at Lex Media steady, continue to increase due to inflation. So the expenses are going up approximately anywhere between three to five percent a year. Our revenue is coming down about five percent a year. So you can see that the gap between our revenue and expense will start growing. Up to fiscal eighteen, so we're going back a few years, up to fiscal eighteen, the revenue that we were getting from our providers, cable providers, covered all the expenses. Since fiscal nineteen, we have a gap between the revenue in your we have a gap between the revenue, in-year revenue and the in-year expenses. Because of, you know, historical bu- uh reserve that we had built up in the peg revenue, we were able to cover that shortfall for some number of years. But we've reached the point where that's really no longer possible. So fiscal twenty four, the current year, the town actually supplemented funding by hundred K. It's also in our budget for next year, fiscal twenty five, hundred K for the town, in addition to the peg revenue to continue to fund Lex Media. So what what I'm gonna walk through is actually the financial view, if we look ahead for the next few years. And based on a review of that, really sort of lay out two options that we're looking at to renew the contract with Lex Media. All right, so if everybody will look at that particular chart, let me just orient you to what the data shows. The X axis there are the fiscal years. The Y axis, the total height of the bars is the total expenses. Right? And you can see that the total height is increasing, as I mentioned, and that's largely due to inflationary increase year over year. The colors, the stacks in each of those bars represent how that total expense amount is being funded. All right, uh the vertical line that you see between fiscal twenty four and twenty five just says, you know, to the left is the past, to the right is projections. Just just so that people remember, I mean, looking ahead, uh these are projected numbers. Fiscal nineteen, if you look at it, it was largely funded from the current year peg revenue, that's the orange bar. We had very little shortfall and that gray amount was dipping into the peg res- revenue reserve, and that made up the shortfall. And that continued till fiscal twenty four, this current year. Current year, as I mentioned, we had hundred K supplemental funding from the town. What we are projecting, and you know, at this point, there's really very little other information that suggests that this trend would not continue. Our concern was there may be technology changes, and that might mean our peg revenue really sort of falls down the cliff and, you know, this gap becomes much worse, but there's nothing currently that suggests that the trend is going to change. So we're projecting this continual decline over the next five or six years. Expenses continue to grow, largely inflation. And what we're showing is that the amount that would need to be supplemented from town funding will continue to grow. Right? And at some point, projecting right now fiscal thirty, whatever money there is in the reserve, in the peg revenue reserve, is is completely used up. So beyond th- fiscal thirty, going into fiscal thirty one onwards, whatever the shortfall is that the peg revenue that year doesn't cover, it would have to be made up by town funding. So if we look sort of five years out, the picture really is we are looking at about five hundred K plus funding from the town. And, you know, we'd get to that point slowly. All right, so if you just sort of recall that the next this chart is really the same chart with and then adding some additional staffing to Lex Media, and I'll talk about the rationale for adding extra uh sta- adding additional staff to Lex Media. At the last meeting, certainly what I heard, and you know, when Florence was presenting, is we'd actually like Lex Media to do even more than what they're doing right now. I think Lex Media staff currently is stretched, and they've added on additional government meetings, and I think if we recall from last week, it was the affordable housing, uh school building, meetings, et cetera. And there was certainly discussion about let's, can we add a little more indexing, can we add some more retrieval capabilities, et cetera? And anything that we ask Lex Media to do over and above what they're currently doing would certainly require additional staff. So the point five F T E that we've shown here, which is the funding in blue on that, is saying even for Lex Media to continue what they're currently doing, which is more than they were doing three years ago or four years ago, would require half an F T E, and if we say we can't fund that half F T E, we'd have to go back and say, all right, what do we take off their plate? And if we want to go beyond that, then we are saying it may be one F T E or more. So that just adds to the financial gap that the town would have to cover if we continue to ask for that. So this is the second option that exists right now, which is Lex Media continue to provide the coverage that you're providing today, not increase it, but continue to do what we are doing today, and that would require an additional half F T E. All right, so what that does is add about forty thousand a year, starting next fiscal twenty five. And then, you know, inflation increases that as we go along. So we end up saying by this, at the end of fiscal thirty again, the reserve fund is completely used up. And the town, we would be looking at the town doing, providing five fifty thousand or more in terms of funding to keep Lex Media pro- continue to provide services at the level they're doing right now. All right, so before I get into this, anybody, any questions there about what we covered?
Uh why don't we continue with the
Okay.
rest of the room, ask all the questions.
Okay.
Okay, so I think the focus, I mean, the decision that we wanted to actually discuss here today is what do we do for the next two years? So what we had done previously in fiscal twenty yeah, fiscal twenty, was lay out a six-year renewal term, a six-year grant agreement with Lex Media and broken that up in three two-year terms. And the reason for doing that, rather than it's enter into a five-year agreement or a longer period in terms of an agreement, was we could watch what was happening with the revenues year over year. And if technology shifts or uh, you know, behavior shift of the consumers showed that the revenue was falling off faster than we were projecting, we'd be able to reset after two years instead of waiting for a full five-year term. So this is now going to be the last of the those two-year extensions. We're now in the last two years. And so July first, we'd have a new contract with Lex Media for two years. So the decision right now would be to say what terms, what financial terms do we want to write into that contract with Lex Media? The rest of the contract stays essentially the same, so there's nothing in the language or the uh contractual services that we need to review. It is really what financial level do we want to fund Lex Media at for the immediate two years? Right? And the options are continue with just the inflationary increase, which would mean Lex Media cutting back some of the services, potentially. Some of the government meetings or some other public events or school events to be able to cover the meetings. Or increase the staffing by half an F T E. And you know, at the end of the two years, we now enter into a brand-new agreement with Lex Media. And there, I think, you know, we should probably start looking at it over the course of next year, rather than wait till the two-year ends, because we're looking really at rethinking how Lex Media is going to be funded. It's a substantial amount of funding that needs to be provided by the town. And so really deciding, using the next year or two to decide at what level that funding is going to be would be important to do. So I, rather than sort of getting, get into what is the long-term future of Lex Media and how is it going to be funded? I think what we wanted to do was focus on the immediate two-year, the coming, upcoming two-year period. And I'm gonna just point out, I mean, the Communications Advisory Committee met this past week, we discussed it in terms of what would the committee recommend to the select board that we do at this point. And the committee, it was not we had a forum, it wasn't everybody there, but everybody who was present voted to say, let's increase by half F T E for the next two years. It doesn't change the long-term picture substantially. It lets us continue, let, getting the services that Lex Media is currently providing. And, you know, we could dip into the reserves and find the forty K for this coming year fiscal twenty five. Look at what we wanted, how we want to fund that extra half F T E in fiscal twenty six, and then look at the longer-term view of how Lex Media is going to be funded. So I wanted to, you know, offer that as input.
Thank you very much for that report, and thank you to everybody on C A C for all the work uh in review of this. Um colleagues, so it looks like we have two options to contemplate. Start with any questions or comments from members of the board? Mark, did you, did you have your hand up?
I was just gonna ask what the recommendation was.
Oh, okay. We got the recommendation. Ms. Barry, I think I saw your handle.
Thank you, Mr. Lucenti. Um so I see Ms. Kostnoff in the room, so I have some questions for her. I don't know why, someone's microphone on.
Oh Rita, 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 shut your room. No, thank you.
So this Kostnoff, I don't know if you can make your way to a mic? It is kind of chilly in here. Are we expecting Mr. Carman? No? Okay. Okay, so my my question is, so the forty K is for the budget, the town meeting is beyond what town meeting approved at the budget this past spring, correct?
Correct.
And what was the funding source for the hundred thousand at this spring's town meeting?
Just the tax levy.
Just the tax levy. So if we were to go ahead and say, yes, we approve this, what would the next steps be?
So technically, to approve it and to actually have the funding in place, we would actually need to go back to town meeting, because the funding source for this um which I'm assuming the intention was that it's gonna come out of the peg revenues. So each year, we make an appropriation from the peg T V revenues in order to fund the operating budget, so we would actually need to make an operating budget adjustment to bring more money over from the peg fund in order to do that. So I would say that probably we would not want to implement this until the fall special town meeting, unless staff could come up with somewhere else in the operating budget to squeeze this in, but I don't I don't know where that would come from. I I think that we would probably want to wait until November.
Okay, then my next question, I'm not sure who can answer this, but I think Mr. Macarius might still be online, even though I'm not sure he gets involved in Lex Media
Maybe he is.
contract um is if we approve this forty K for a point five F T E, is there anything in the contract that says they explicitly have to spend the money on that? Or could they spend the money on something else?
I don't have the contract in front of me. Um I did go back through it the other day, but I can't say that off the top, I need to review it.
The the contract was in the packet, but Mr. Macarius is also here, he may or may not have an answer to that question.
I I have not had a chance to review that. Uh if it's expressed in the contract that that's what that money is for, uh that would be binding, otherwise um if it's a general appropriation, it might not be.
Okay, because I guess the point I'm getting at is we had to control F T Es on the municipal side of the budget, but Lex Media is a standalone entity. So technically, we could say, yes, forty thousand for an F T E. We know them well, we trust them well, but if something came up and they chose not, they could not spend it on that.
I think that's probably accurate. I don't remember off the top anything in the agreement about the level of staffing that they need to have, just the fact that they're providing service.
And we're hearing that Florence Del Santo from Lex Media is saying there is nothing in the contract about staffing levels.
Okay, and to go back to your your comment or your suggestion that this wait till fall special town meeting, so a fall special town meeting happens in November? When then, and it and if it was successful, which it most likely would be, um when then would that money be available to Lex Media? Would it be immediate? Is there a waiting period?
No, it would be available as soon as town meeting was over. Um I guess the one other thing that I could offer as a suggestion would be to fund this, they could potentially do an U R P A repressed, that would be another potential source to get through from July and or whenever until November. But yes, i- in order to have the Lex, the peg funds available in the operating budget, we would need to do a transfer at at a town meeting, assuming that happens in November.
Okay, and then if we just look, sorry, one last thing, if we either look at option one or two, or I guess option two. Um so option two, Kim, if you can pull that up, that slide. So while that showed, that's super tiny up there, but while it shows the additional forty for potentially for F Y twenty five and F Y twenty six, I want to say it's really an extra ninety-two, because that hundred's going to a hundred and fifty, and then this forty-two on top of it. Is that a correct way to read that slide?
I I'm gonna need you to repeat that.
That is.
Okay, thank you.
What I was saying is, for this coming year, they're getting a hundred, they're asking for forty, but for next fiscal year, it looks like they're gonna be looking for a hundred and fifty to close the gap. Plus the forty-two, that forty-two, and it goes from forty to forty-two, is not within the hundred and fifty.
That's correct.
Okay.
Um I would say that when the last time we looked at this, we had expected that that hundred was gonna continue increasing. Um and so, you know, in when we originally did the hundred thousand in fiscal twenty-four, we had expected to go up in fiscal twenty-five. Revenues didn't drop off quite as dramatically as we had originally expected, so we leveled it for fiscal twenty-five at one hundred thousand. Um I think our original projections were actually to increase it by a hundred thousand a year, not fifty. Um so this is not quite as dire as that original projection, but it does still show that by fiscal thirty, we would basically have to be covering the the a really good chunk of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Any other comments or questions, colleagues? Ms. Hay?
So I'm not always an advocate for creative accounting, but when we're looking at a budget of this size and we're talking about a delta of forty thousand, and maybe this is a question for Ms. Del Santo, um i- if town meeting doesn't approve that additional forty thousand until November, are you restricted from using money that, since this isn't specified in the contract, are you restricted from using money that you already have to hire that extra F T E and the additional forty thousand from town meeting comes in in November?
Ms. Del Santo, do you wanna wanna come to the mic? To try to answer the question.
Putting you on the spot.
Oh, if you could push the um
Slide it towards you at the top. There's a button on the top, slides.
I think I've seen these things before.
It's a, pull, it's right on the top, pull it toward you.
Toward you.
That it? Yes. Um so the question is, can Lex Media cover that forty until November? And I would say we can. Um we have a separate, um we've been doing some fundraising on the side, and we could borrow that. You know, looking at our future, we're trying to raise funds, we could borrow from that until November.
I guess my my point only is, if we have at this board, as I think we have, said that coverage of the, you know, the current level of meetings that we have, particularly as we ramp up the conversations around the high school and other things, it is important. And I would hate to see the drop off in coverage um in the interim.
Mr. Padam?
And so I'm I'm pretty uncomfortable with the hiring somebody on the promise that town meeting might sometime in the future to take in action. Um that that's soft money at best. The um so I I really do want to expand how we collect, serve uh information, the videos of our meetings and broaden it to more committees. But I'm not really comfortable in saying we haven't planned a change in staffing, we haven't reviewed how this would go, we haven't reviewed the budget in in anticipation of this. Um so making a decision to increase the commitment tonight leaves me feeling uncomfortable. Um I do think that we need to examine how might we shift obligations? So for example, the board is reviewing its um its packet and agenda management software, and there are components that can include video archiving. And there might be possibilities to take some of the burden off of Lex Media, uh put it somewhere else and make sure that Lex Media is doing what we want to do creatively in town. Um so I I would like to spend the time to actually research what's the reasonable path forward before saying the best path is just to add uh an F T E or half an F T E. Because the net is, I want to continue to grow the way we service the community. But I don't want to necessarily say the best way to do that is uh just throwing money in a particular bucket right now.
Thank you, Mr. Padam. Um so I think I'm coming at it a little differently, where they are an independent, quasi-independent organizational call. I'm not as, I think, um, tied into what. Their plan is for the money. I think they're looking for additional funding. They're telling us they're using that additional funding so that they can keep the level of service that we've been asking for. How they do that. It really, I'm less concerned about because they could say, oh, we, we have. Two employees, um, already, and they're both going to go to part time, we're going to hire a third person full time. I mean, it could be a mix of. Whatever staffing level that they need to operate to provide the level of service that we've been. Asking them for, and I think that's the key is that we've been asking. This idea isn't new. This idea has come up. I think it's been at least several months since I've heard of this, maybe even a year. So I, I think they, they have contemplated this. Thoroughly. Uh, I think it's really up to us to say, are we comfortable with the request? My worry, Mr. Pedo, about waiting for the software is that that's also an unknown. We don't know what we're getting. So that evaluation of that and the, and the. You know, changing our packet software may or may not. I'm uncomfortable sort of saying, well, let's see how that process goes before we make a decision because I don't, I don't think we'll be able to make a decision. Also, their contract is up. July first, so there is some time pressure. We don't have to, of course, say. Yes, to the option that's being presented to us, but I do think there's a fair. Uh, and reasonable case that was made at the last meeting, and I think the CAC is also, you know, examined this thoroughly. I, I, I think as a community. We are not alone in struggling with this concept. And one of my questions I had for. Um, the Communications Advisory Committee is what are other communities doing? We cannot be the only ones that are seeing a drop in PEG revenue. Uh, in trying to keep our service level for local media. Uh, live, so maybe you can fill us in on that, or maybe others know. Oh, Lawrence, do you have an answer to that?
Well, the answer I have is they're all doing the same thing you are. We're, we're all trying to figure it out. There are, um. There's something going through the state, uh, the. Mass access is trying to get money for streaming. To get a percentage of the streaming, but that's still an unknown whether that's ever going to pass. But I can tell you, everyone is doing exactly what we're doing, trying to figure out where we're gonna, like, how we're going to manage this going forward.
So let me add, I think, I believe Concord actually moved their CAC as part of a town department.
So their Lex, our Lex, their version of Lex Media is in.
In the town office. So I think every, every town is looking at this differently to figure out what the solution would be.
And I, and I think this two-year period we have is a time where we should reflect and figure out what's the, what's the best path forward. Uh, at the same time, um, I guess the question really is, do we want? To see a dip in service or, you know, maybe it isn't necessary to have some of the meetings covered. But I think that's what I heard and understood. Maybe Mr. Shaw's at the microphone, maybe you can clarify what the service level interruption would be if we picked option. One, which is to not increase this funding level.
Well, hi, Jim Shaw, Chair of the Board of Lex Media. Um, we, we would definitely see an impact, you know, reduc- reduction in, in coverage. Especially as we're going into the two hundred and fiftieth, we're, we're, we're already being asked to cover two hundred and fiftieth events on top of everything else. Um, and, um, so, you know, our hands would be essentially tied with that. You know, we would do our very best. We very rarely turn away requests, but we do sometimes when we, you know, when they're outside the scope of what we do. Um, we try to accommodate all, all comers, but. Um, we can't always do that. And oftentimes we have our staff covering two meetings at the same time. Um, one of the upsides of being able to do it somewhat remotely is that they can actually do two at one time. And so there's, you know, there's been a bit of a benefit there. But it's, um, it, there would definitely be an effect. I also wanted to point out, uh, just clarify too, we're talking about. Adding an F halftime FTE, but essentially it's really going to be level staffing because we lost a halftime FTE. Some time ago, um, and we're trying to bring that back. And, um, I think I mentioned that last week when I was here. Um, and, um, through whatever the cost, cost increases and other things. Um, it just, you know, we, we just don't have the wherewithal to bring that person back. So we're, we're doing actually more with less. Um, and I can say without, without any question that if the committee were to vote, um, to, uh, option two. We would absolutely, we could sign an addendum or something to the, to the effect that this money would be put aside for, for staffing. If that would, you know, ease any concerns.
Mr. Sandy.
So I, I just have a question. I don't know if it's for Ms. Costinoff or Mr. Macarios. Um, if we approve this with the funding and the funding isn't in place, we don't put ourselves in a position, do we? Or we can't approve it until the funding's approved?
Okay, it's on. Um, so we, so again, Lex Media runs their own operation, how they just. Uh, to decide to spend the funding that they have in order to provide their services is not usually. We don't put our hands in that typically. It's just they manage the contract. We cannot sign a contract without the funding in place. So at this point. Um, I would say that we probably would want to sign a contract for level funding unless you, again, wanted, we could come up with an alternate funding source. Um, but as of right now, for July first, we really would have to. Fund at the level that we have. If town meeting were to make a supplemental appropriation, we could do an addendum. To the contract at that point in time and increase the amount. But I really, at this point. You know, we cannot sign a contract for something that we do not have funding source for.
Okay, but if it's a two-year contract, we're signing a contract and we're not funding year two. Am I getting, am I missing something here?
So. I mean, this is how most of our contracts work. We could enter into long-term contracts. Once you sign the contract, you're obligated for that, but I would say at this point, we really don't have a budget. Set. The budget has now been set, and so to sign the contract above and beyond.
Looking at those different parts.
If, if we were, so for the next year, so for fiscal, we don't have the budget. For fiscal twenty six, if you were to sign a contract. You know, for the next year to increase it, then we would have to budget at that level in order to meet the contractual obligation.
Mr. Sandy.
So just following up on Ms. Berry's, uh, comments, I guess it's a question for Mr. Macarios. Uh, there would be no restriction on us amending the contract if town meeting, um, was to approve this extra funding. Is that correct, Mr. Macarios?
If, if town meeting were to give you extra funding, there would be no restriction on. Giving that, yes, to, to giving that to Lex Media and providing that extra funding. Um, I guess, again, without having the contract in front of me, I, uh, fully, I'm not sure whether you need an amendment or it would just be an additional appropriation. Um, I don't know. So that, that's the thing that would.
My, my only question, Mr. Macarios, is there would be, we wouldn't have to wait two years until the next contract is up in order for this to take effect. This is what I'm understanding.
No, presumably if they would agree to accept the extra funding, there would be no need to, to wait.
Right. Okay, so then my, so, so then my, my feeling on this request is that. What I'm hearing from the rest of the board is that we're looking at a. Level funding, which is not a level service. Right? So a level funding would require a cut to level service, right? And what, what I'm hearing is that the board is interested in expanding and, and, and seeing the service that is. Currently being provided to continue to be provided and maybe even looking at, uh, expanding things. So in that case, it seems to me that we need to find a way to. Find, to make option two become a reality. So, um, in, in that, that would be my recommendation.
Ms. Hay.
Um, I agree, Mr. Sandy, and I was going to say, in fact, I would suggest that we, um, entertain a motion along the lines of. Um, approving for the purposes of July one, um, at the funding that is currently budgeted in our FY twenty five. Budget with, um, the expectation that we will consider, um. Reexamining the funding level. Both at the time of special town meeting in FY twenty five and for the FY twenty six. Year so that we have, because again, to your point, we also, or Ms. Berry's, whoever, or both of you made it. That we obviously also, just like we do in employment contracts where we will annually review salary, we would annually review the funding. But I would just add in the expectation that we would consider this for the fall town meeting.
Mr. Pedo.
So I concur with that, um, but I was going to say, Mr. Sandy said level funding, you have to be careful, it's not level funding, this is incre- it's an increase in funding. It is what we budgeted for this fiscal year.
So I'll call attention to everybody, exhibit B in the contract, uh, which was attached to the packet. We had the original exhibit B. Which is on page.
Connected to the internet anymore.
Oh, boy. How long? Page seventeen, thank you. And those funding levels for the first two years of the contract were, uh, between operating capitals five hundred and thirty five. Then it went to five forty two, five, five hundred and forty two thousand five hundred. And then in exhibit B for the extension, which we signed in twenty twenty two, the dollar amounts went to. Excuse me, we signed in, uh, yes, in twenty. Two years ago. And those scheduled payments went up from. Five forty two to five sixty two. Eight, seven, five, and then the year after that, which is the year that's ending right now. Fiscal year twenty four, it went to five eighty nine, five one seven. So. We. We don't sign this contract, town manager does, so we're actually not signing it. And I think what we're, we're trying to do is give direction to what. You know, where we want to see Lex Media over the next two years. And I'm hearing some consensus for the. Prove the two-year extension with the. Caveat that we will bring this to a fall town meeting or the next available town meeting, I'll say. Uh, and look at revising the allocation for Lex Media at that time. Does that sound good to everybody? Okay, Mr. Pedo.
Just to be clear, approve the extension at the planned budgeting level.
Currently, right, currently budgeted.
At the option one level.
As budgeted.
Right, as budgeted, we, we can't do anything about that.
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Costinoff.
Ms. Costinoff.
I did just want to make a point, um, that we, we did factor an increase into the budget, assuming that the contractual price was going to go up. Um, so there are, there is an escalation built already into the budget. And so, again, I would say that we. Would approve this at a level service. I, I know that it was sort of characterized that level service was going to cost more money and hence the FTE, but. Um, you know, without sort of adding an additional person, that's typically what we refer to as a level service budget. So I don't. Without, and without adding an extra person.
The only issue with using level service is there's this caveat of, they have this whole service, then they, you know, again. Their internal operations, we don't typically get.
Right.
Too heavily involved in. So I think that to Mr. Pedo's point of calling it the funding.
Yeah.
The funding that we had approved at town.
That is fine.
I think that's probably something I'm more comfortable with.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Costa. Okay, are there any comments or questions from members of the audience? Okay, I see Don McKenna hand up. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Thank you, Don McKenna, Nine Hancock Street. So I fully support, um, this additional funding that they. Want and have a sort of question, suggestion. Wouldn't it be possible for the, um, board to. Approve giving them the additional forty thousand, and as we do in many other cases, when unexpected. Costs come along, we take it out of the reserve fund. And then in the fall town meeting, we could make a transfer back to the reserve fund. Um, and take care of the forty thousand dollars at that point without making Lex Media wait or. Having a contract that isn't doing what we all know is going to happen. And, you know, we, we sign contracts all the time where. You have to change the funding, so I don't see why we couldn't do that, especially on such a small impact to the reserve fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Ms. Costinoff, could you address the question that was brought up about reserve funds?
So I would just say that the criteria for doing a reserve fund transfer is something that was extraordinary and unforeseen. Um, not only does this board need to approve it, but the appropriation committee needs to approve that as well. I, I think that. Trying to characterize this as extraordinary and unforeseen is probably a stretch.
Does the rest of the board feel that way, saying, yes. So, um, and. Appreciate everybody's comments on this. I think I'm going to try to make a motion here. So I move to authorize the town manager to execute a contract extension with Lex Media. For the period covering July one, twenty twenty four through June thirty, twenty twenty six, as budgeted. For FY twenty four. With a opportunity to reexamine the budget level at the next available town meeting to accommodate. The increase requested by Lex Media. Second, thank you, Mr. Pedo. For the second, move to the second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, they say none, the motion is unanimous. And I want to thank Lex Media. And thank the Communications Advisory Committee for all their work on this, and we will, uh, be in touch about. Town meeting and putting an article together for that. Thank you. Hey, colleagues, we're going to move on to our fourth item listed on the agenda. Which is for the board to discuss and approve the request for proposal and land disposition agreement for parcel sixty eight dash forty four located on Lowell Street. We're being joined by Elaine Tong, Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, as well as Linda Prozennitz from the Affordable Housing Trust and Town Council Nina Macarios. Who will walk us through this final draft of the RFP. Ms. Tong, do you want to start? Or Mr. Macarios? I'm not sure who's.
I believe Mr. Macarios should start.
Okay, Mr. Macarios.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this, this is, uh, a document that reflects, uh, a significant amount of work from the Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, input from the select board, other boards and committees, town meeting members, uh, neighbors and members of the public on the RFP. Um, and, um, without, uh, and I know the board has had a chance to look at it, it also has had a chance to look at the. Land disposition agreement. So I will just speak at a very high level, um, and I think there are maybe one or two issues, um, that remain, um, for discussion, but. Um, the overall approach to the document, and, um, Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to, I'm happy to walk through. Sort of by section, but I think maybe approach is more useful. Um, the, the request for proposal here is intended to balance. The. Flexibility that allows for developers who, um, submit proposals to. Let the town know the best way to make use of the site, uh, to, um, balance different features and design proposals while providing enough guidance. For, uh, proposals, um, to, to look and, um. Provide the features that the town wants, uh, namely a hundred percent of rental affordable, uh, affordable rental housing. Um, uh, sensitivity to sustainability goals of the town, um, just, uh, sensitivity to site layout. Connection with pedestrian walkways, um, and pedestrian access, et cetera. Um, it is structured, as I think, uh, what we mentioned last time. Uh, to be, um, to lead to a disposition of the land through a land disposition agreement. Uh, that is essentially a, a more complex purchase and sale agreement that is used. Uh, where the seller, in this case, the town, uh, for nominal value, wants to retain, uh, a certain degree of control. Over what is actually being developed and how it's developed. Um, so the RFP and the LDA kind of work together. The idea would be that the RFP, uh, goes out with an LDA, um, in the next. The idea would be that the RFP goes out with an LDA in the next week or so, if approved. Responses would be due by August twenty-second, as you can see. Thank you, I think Ms. Catherine Bach is always a step ahead of me here, anticipating the timeline. There would be opportunities for questions to be asked by folks intending to propose a sidewalk. The RFP responses would come in. The town would then have up to ninety days to make an award. It could do it sooner, but it would have up to ninety days. And then following that, would enter into a form of the land disposition agreement, which will look substantially in the form that it was presented, except that proposals can include exceptions, proposed differences, et cetera, to it. And those who don't raise them would be, if you don't raise an issue, you no longer can, you know, negotiate after. So the deal is driven by the town in the first instance. And the land disposition agreement importantly includes provisions that make sure that there, that the project gets built by the proposal, by, by the proposing entity in accordance with the proposal and also in accordance with a comprehensive permit likely or other zoning approval to be issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that if it's not, that the town has opportunities to take the land back, require damages for, for that, any lost value, et cetera. So the town, the town remains with a hand in the proceeding without committing its own resources to it for building. So that's sort of the general overview. I believe there are no significant changes from what's in your packet for the LDA or the, or the RFP. There are a handful that were discussed by the Affordable Housing Trust today that are mostly typographical. The only one that I'll mention, I think, is, was sort of a clarification on some of the DEI provisions. There's a reference to community, MBEs, WBEs and communities that are underrepresented in development world and the real estate development. That last part was tweaked to make it clear that it's members of communities that are underrepresented. And that the idea there is to have a broad, is to ask proposals, to ask for proposers to include in their proposal as many details as they can about how they are addressing diversity and inclusion goals throughout their development process, develop their leadership teams, their management teams, their contracting, et cetera. And that's, that's one piece. The only other issue, I believe, other than removing that extra period that is now glaring at me on the screen, is the, is that, I believe there was a discussion last time among the board of one particular sentence referring to the target for the number of units for inclusion on, for, in proposals. The current language in the RFP, based on comments from received before, are, is up to approximately forty units. There are concerns that that may be both confusing and may suggest that there is an upper bound, a hard upper bound of forty, that forty-one, forty-two would not be within that. And I believe, I can turn it back to Ms. Tong or Ms. Prozennitz, but that there, there, the concern as articulated to me and articulated to board is that forty is kind of around the sweet spot. And I think that's been true in our experience for a development, for a development area of this size to attract a, attract funding, including from state and federal grant entities. And that there's probably not going to be enough creativity provided if, if you're limiting at that. Whereas the board and the town retains the right, of course, to reject any proposals that are well above that and does not have to accept any, you know, any proposal at all. I'd also just reiterate a point that was made, was that, you know, that this is number of units, not number of people, cars, traffic, et cetera. Because one of the things that this proposal does is asks for a mix of units and proposals may come in with, with varying mixes of one, two, three-bedroom units, for instance. So, so I just note that that point, I believe, Mr. Sandin can correct me if I'm wrong or Ms. Tong, was that the Affordable Housing Trust asked again after its meeting today to remove the "up to", but otherwise, there is, I don't think there's any other changes, not reflect that document other than those typographical ones and the changes on the diversity and inclusion provision that I mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Macarios. Ms. Tong, anything?
Yes, I believe the board has also received an email today from Elizabeth Rust from the Regional Housing Services Offices that concurred that having this language would give a strong suggestion of an upper limit of forty units. And that in her experience, that would then create a situation where developers would not be applying if they were thinking that for them, it would be feasible to have forty-one units or forty-two units. What I do want to add that was not in my letter previously presented to you is that this is Lexington's first project for an affordable housing project. And we have always said we want it to be a quality project, something we can be proud of, that the community can stand behind. And we want the very best of developers to be applying to this. And therefore, we need to give them the flexibility in order to do so. So I believe Carol Kowalski, I hope she's online, she's also wanted to make some comments as well.
And Carol, if you'd like to comment now? Can you unmute her?
I'll mute you, Coles.
Oh, Coles, okay, thank you.
There was a little delay in to unmute. Thank you, yes. I, I want to ask the board respectfully to consider removing the "up to" phrase for a few reasons. One is the town meeting Select Board statement did not have the two words approximately forty units. And I think that's important because it is approximately. And the points that were made about this limiting responses is quite serious, I think, especially when you consider that it's hard to know what interest, or community or municipal interest is served by, by putting a limit, which will be perceived as a limit, whether it's intended or not. It will be perceived as the upper limit. It's hard to understand whether it's trying to restrict the number of households or which type of units are, is the intent to restrict one-bedroom units or two-bedroom units or three-bedroom units? And is, is that, and why? I guess is the question, what interest does it serve? Are we trying to address building size? The RFP already does that elsewhere in the document. Would we be trying to restrict the number of children? I don't think so, because I think the board knows that's not legal or desirable. And furthermore, there's recent, recent presentation I saw that is quite persuasive that shows that multifamily housing does not increase school enrollments and that school enrollment costs are not going up as a result of school enrollment increases. They're going up because of other capital expenditures. And this is not just in, in Massachusetts. This is, this particular presenter was discussing national demographics and school enrollment facts, as well as these particular, the cases were from similar communities in Connecticut. So it's just hard to understand what interest would be served by putting this upper limit of forty units. So I, I wanted to pose those questions so that we can really try to understand if, if it isn't serving a community interest or if that interest is served elsewhere in the, in the RFP. I hope the board would consider removing words "up to."
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski. And I want to, you know, again, reiterate my thanks to the Affordable Housing Trust, as well as Town Council for all the work that's gone into this. I've really never had so much discussion about two words, two very short words, too. And I, I'm, I'm a little frankly confused by the confusion that this could cause, but I'm, I'm listening and taking it all in. As you all know, there was three of us on the board that thought that the "up to" phrase was appropriate and two members thought the "up to" phrase was not appropriate, if I remember correctly. We were, we were kind of split. So I will start with Ms. Hay.
So I think I actually moved last time from wanting to leave the approximately forty to trying to make, I don't know, make peace. And I am rescinding that, because while I, you know, I'm an advocate of peace, I, you know, having the week to think about it, I realized most importantly, we presented to town meeting our position. And our position and the basis upon which they voted said up to forty, or said approximately forty. Didn't say up to, it said approximately forty. So I think that's a really important piece, you know, that we are being true to our word, to our presentation and to the basis upon which town meeting voted. Additionally, I take very strongly the professional opinions that we received, both the literal professionals like Ms. Rust, but also the really deep amount of experience and research that was done by the trust itself. So I am in favor of removing "up to."
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Mr. Pato, Ms. Barry, Mr. Sandin, anyone else want to comment? Mr. Sandin?
I, as, as I mentioned in our last meeting, I, I think one of the things I think about this, reiterate what Ms. Hay said. My, my feeling is, is that town meeting members came to us very strongly and said, before you bring this to town meeting, we really want you to communicate to us what the boundaries of this are. And we spent a lot of time as this board discussing what those boundaries were, particularly in this regard, in terms of the number of units. And in terms of the word Ms. Hay used, "peace", there were a lot of folks who were looking for much larger number of units. There were a number of folks looking for smaller number of units. And the board settled in after a lot of discussion on approximately forty, which seemed to satisfy many of the town meeting members. The other thing I would say is that, as Ms. Tong was saying earlier tonight, this is a rare opportunity that we have to have, make a difference with town-owned property. There just isn't a lot of town-owned property. And if we look, it's probably going to be decades almost before we see similar type property being available again. So from that perspective, I think we need to listen to the professionals and what we have earlier committed to town meeting in terms of saying approximately forty.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin. Mr. Pato?
Sorry, I remain uncomfortable with removing the words "up to." There, there are a wide range of concerns I have. First, I want to just address the comment that said multi-family dwellings don't increase enrollment. Multifamily dwellings don't increase enrollment in a way that's different from single-family dwellings. Increasing dwellings increases the likelihood of enrollment. So any increment in housing is likely to lead to additional resource consumption. We talked about this a fair amount, but this became a difficult issue to, to, to narrow down. And there was still, I believe, in the air, a question of this is going to come, the RFP is going to come to the board through an open process where we will discuss the criteria that we will be needing to put forward. And the, the question of size was not put to bed. And for me, the issue of approximately forty without "up to" doesn't telegraph to developers that we are willing to consider a range of suitable proposals. If you want to change this to say from approximately twenty to approximately forty, I'd be okay with that. In the absence of wanting to set a lower bound, the words "up to" telegraph the notion that we're not tied to a tight number, but it's not going to go much beyond forty.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. Mr. Sandin?
So my engineering mind said that was what Mr. Pato said was correct. You know, that "up to" meant that you could be, that somebody reading this would say, well, I can just propose whatever my four, but what I've been convinced of in the past week is that engineering mind doesn't qualify how people are going to respond to a proposal and that folks are going to be looking at, where do I put my resources? And if I have any question that my resources are not going, are going to be wasted in a proposal, then I'm not going to make that proposal. And I've been convinced over the past week that those two words "up to", that I was thinking from an engineering perspective, would mean the same to me as we would get the same level of proposals. I've been convinced by people in the business that this in fact would be, have us extremely deleterious effect on our ability to attract proposals. So while I do agree with Mr. Pato in an engineering sense, if we were designing an airplane, "up to" would be accepted as a definition the way you've proposed, but in terms of proposals, I don't think it works.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin, Ms. Barry, if you want to sway in.
Sweet, when you were gonna do that. So reflecting back upon the words and reading all the emails that, excuse me, came through this week, in, in particular, reading the one that came this afternoon from Ms. Rust, I can be convinced to go, to leave the "up to" and go back to "approximately." I've been the one that has sat here and whether you want to say I banged my hand on the table, my shoe, whatever. And I've said, we have talked this talk long enough, it's time to walk this walk. If changing those two words is going to affect people bidding on this project to that extent, which we seem to be hearing is unanimous from all the experts in this area, that it could potentially implode this project, that would be a disservice to this community. And so for those reasons and a few more, I can change to approximately.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. I'm, I'm with Mr. Pato in spirit on this because I, I, I hear his argument. I still struggle with how this is, reading the fact that it says forty with words around it. That's the number that sticks out to people. It's the, you can put whatever words and phrases you want around it. I think I don't see how that's gonna change who's bringing what proposal. However, this is not worth dying on the sword over. I would like to see this process move forward. I would like to see a good project if the experts that we pay and hire are saying, this is the only way to get good proposals by removing these two words, then I'm, I can digest that. I can also digest the fact that we did tell town meeting something, but to Mr. Pato's point, this was up in the air at that time. So I think there's, while there may not be consensus, I think, you know, I'm, I'm hearing at least three and a half members saying that we're okay with getting rid of the word "up to" and using just approximately. Mr. Pato, do you want to add anything?
So I worry about not getting a full range of quality proposals. Because I worry about if we get proposals that are too large, I may not be able to agree to move forward. I'm okay living with it, up to about forty. But if this goes beyond that, I may end up voting against moving forward at this time at all. And if we had a high-quality twenty-five unit, thirty-unit proposal that is solicited because the respondents looking at it realize we're not looking at only forty-unit proposals? Because when I read it without the words "up to," it says, you're looking for forty units. And I'm not. I'm looking for the best proposals that are going to make use of our, our land effectively. And if somebody reads this and thinks that a fifty-unit proposal is within scope, it clearly is not in scope for me.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. Okay, Ms. Tong? Okay, Ms. Tong?
Mr. Pato, I appreciate your concern and it is fully within the select board's power to pick whatever appropriate proposal you think is correct. Our concern on behalf of Affordable Housing Trust is that you will not get proposals if we keep this kind of language in here, and that is our worry. The data that I provided to you in my email shows the range of proposals that were funded by the state. And that is going to be critical funding in order for this development to move forward. And those all show that, you know, beginning at thirty-eight units is where it starts. We fully do not believe that you're going to get a proposal for twenty or less, but I don't know if Linda Prossence wants to add to this.
Ms. Prossence? Give it one.
Just use the mic over to her.
Yeah, I think the, as Elaine said, the when developers do look at this, there is an enormous amount of work that goes into proposing something. They've got to hire architects, they've got to take a lot of staff time. And when they're looking at putting in a proposal, they're going to be looking at something that they can, is competitive, that they believe they can get state financing for and that's feasible. And the state is really, I think that the one project we saw that was lower than thirty-eight was a very low income project. It was really at incomes that were below thirty percent of area meeting income, which is not, which is atypical. So I, it really is. Developers are going to be creative. I, I, I think personally, I don't worry about really large projects. I think people are going to look at, at the constraints of the property. They're going to develop something which is, speaks to everything that was in the RFP about being compatible with the town, about the heights and all that. And I expect we will get proposals that are within the forty unit range, maybe more, maybe a little less. But not any, I, I would be surprised if we got them as high as fifty. And certainly it's within the purview of the town not to accept those. And just the other thing I'd say is during the comp permit process, there is going to be a lot of give and take. There will be a lot of discussion and any concerns that the town had about the proposal and such, it will, it will be discussed then. And I guess just one other point is the economy of scales. And I think this was in the, the email we sent is that as you have fewer units, the cost per unit goes way up. And that it means that it requires more subsidy per unit. And that is much more competitive to get. So that's where we're trying to get in that, you know, forty-ish range, you, you start getting in a range where you can get the subsidies to support a project like that. And, and that's what developers are going to be thinking about. Is this something I can move forward on?
Thank you. Colleagues, so I'm hearing some consensus, Mr. Pato worries, his concerns, which I, I heard many of them. But I think in an effort to move this forward, we will have to take a vote on this now. Voting on the RFP and the land disposition agreement, which was attached. I do want to reiterate that when this comes back, I'm sure we will have robust discussions about what, what the project that's being proposed and whether it fits what we all imagine. Not just from a number of units perspective, but from all sorts of perspectives about scale and does it fit on the land and how much disruption to traffic and all the other thing. So there's, there's a lot for us to consider beyond just these units. So we're taking, taking a little bit of a leap of faith, not knowing what we're going to get. With that said, I am going to take very brief public comment, if there is any, seeing that we've sort of ready to move on this. If anyone is interested in making public comment, please raise your hand. Or press the raise hand button at Zoom. Okay, seeing no one with a hand raised, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the RFP as amended. And the land disposition agreement as amended, which was attached. Is there a second?
Just to clarify, we didn't amend the, we didn't amend the LDA, we only amended the RFP.
Correct. So let me rephrase that. I move to approve the RFP as amended with the language of approximately forty units. And the land disposition agreement, which was attached to the packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay.
And I haven't said either yet. I'll say aye.
All right. The motion is unanimous, five to zero. And thank you, colleagues, and thank you again, Ms. Tong and Ms. Prossence and Mr. Macarius.
Thank you.
On to our fifth, Mr. Macarius, you're free to go, I think, at this point.
Town report's all about, but that's okay.
If you want to write our report, maybe. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Macarius. Okay, our fifth item on the agenda is for the board to discuss recommended diversity, equity and inclusion changes for select board meetings. Ms. Extell will make the presentation on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. As a follow up to the presentation of tangible developments a couple of meetings ago, we have been working with them, as you know, internally, not necessarily externally. However, in our discussions and in our feedback we are getting is a lot around the leadership of the town. And in our discussions around the leadership of the town, we're, we feel we wanted to bring this idea up to the select board as the leadership of the town, not just looking at the senior management team or the town manager, but also because inclusion is in your goals and different things that might, the board, different actions that the board might be able to take to show the community that they are, that you are also moving forward in your goals of inclusion. So one suggestion that we talked about with tangible developments and also with the chief equity officer is the way that the board, for lack of a better term, but addresses people in their meetings. And it's not a bad thing. If you, I, I can't see the screen, but if you can go to the second to last slide of the presentation, it gives an overview, it gives just the, the slightest teether of dropping formality as a suggestion in the tangible development presentation. And what that is looking at, at in the community, the non-gendered or gender neutral community, we've been talking about how people like to be addressed and the inclusivity or exclusivity of our meetings and the way that we address each other during discussions. And that being said, an idea came forth, which was around, if you look at the three suggestions in the cover sheet, the community that goes by non, or non-binary, mon, non-binary or don't go by Ms., Mister or Mrs. can feel excluded from discussions if we off the bat talk informalities or, or attach a gender to somebody's name or look. So I wanted to bring up on behalf of the chief equity officer, three suggestions that we discussed with tangible development around inclusivity around meetings and ask for the board to discuss them. So the first one is to drop the formality altogether. As we, the board addresses everyone, we all have our names, Mr. and Ms. Nets, oh, that's been around for a very long time. I'm not sure if the, if the board is ready to do that. So besides that, we also wanted to bring up in Mr. Lucente's opening speech, there's a opportunity to ask attendees to let the board know how they would like to be addressed. That's a very simple, when you, when you raise your hand to speak or you come to the microphone, if you let us know how you would like to be addressed, and then that's how they can be addressed for the rest of the meeting. The other opportunity is to use the non-gendered mix or mucks is the way that it's called. And so that's a suggestion that came from tangible development as well. It's, it's a compromise around dropping the formality altogether or asking the attendees how they would like to be addressed. And it's, it's again, it's really looking at the inclusivity and moving that goal forward, not just on a staff level as we're doing throughout the year with our second phase with tangible development, but also as the town, as the community and making sure that we're, we're, we're looking at everything. And I did just want to, before I turn it over to the board for, to discuss, the town clerk's office let me know that the marriage intentions no longer have gender on them. And the birth certificates also say parent, they no longer say mother or father. So I did want to let the board know that there are other documents, other entities that are moving towards non-gendered language. And I just wanted to bring this up as a discussion point for the board.
Thank you, Ms. Extell. Appreciate you bringing this forward. I have a bunch of thoughts, but I'll start with Ms. Hay.
Thank you. So thank you for bringing this up. I, I do think it's an interesting topic. I have actually also brought this up with the MMA Diversity Advisory Committee on which I sit, and it is, other than me, comprised of DEI professionals in the municipal world. And we've talked about this a lot, actually. And the, the trick with, you know, mix or mucks, and apparently it's pronounced both ways, depending on who the speaker is, is that it really isn't meant to be a universal. It is meant to be an option in the same way that Ms. is, or doctor or reverend, you, you may choose to be addressed by whatever feels comfortable to you or feels appropriate to you, but we run the risk of actually being exclusionary in some ways if we mislabel people by using the mix. So I'm, because you're, you're essentially, unless they have told you that they want to be identified on a non-binary or by a non-binary pronoun, you, you could be making an assumption in its own way. So I, I would very strongly say that the world, not just we, but the world is not ready for us to move to that yet because it is not seen as an appropriate universal. It is appropriate if you choose to use it, it is not necessarily a universal. So my perspective is that the most inclusive thing to do would be to call people, and this is in fact what is being done in several of the communities that are represented on the task force or the, the advisory committee. It is to use people's full name as they have it either on their Zoom account when you call them online or as they identify themselves at the, at the microphone. So if I go up to the microphone and I say, I'm Jill Hay, I live, you know, precinct four, I'm a town meeting member, you could then, you know, just, you could either, I suppose, say, thank you very much, and how would you like me to refer to you or to, you know, or how would you like me to address you, whichever you think is clearer? Or you could just say my full name, which feels very awkward, but at least is how the individual is referring to themselves. And it seems like that is the, for the people who are trying to move away from the formal titles, that is largely where the communities have gone.
Mr. Sandy?
So thank you. So from, so from my perspective, I'm an informal guy typically, until I got on this board, I call everybody by their first name. So I'm very comfortable with calling people by their first name. I'd be happy with that. But I understand the select board has, you know, some interest in, in trying to be a little bit more formal. So in that case, I look to suggestion number two, asking how attendees like to be addressed. And for myself, when I think about this, most of the attendees that are speaking to us are people that are coming to us sort of prepared, like we have people who are presenting tonight coming to us from, from various committees and organizations. And they, we would have an opportunity as staff to ask in advance, how would you like to be addressed? And to Ms. Hay's comment, the options are not just Mister, Miss and Mucks. The options may be chief and reverend or doctor, right? And so if we are having the Chair of the Board of Health come, we might want to address that chair as doctor as opposed to Mister or Miss. So from my perspective, I think it's a reasonable solution to go with option two, which is in preparation for our meetings, we're, we're asking people who are, we know are going to be speaking at a meeting in advance what they would like to be called.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy, Mr. Pato, Ms. Barry, and Ms. Barry.
So I hear what you're saying, Mark, but I think it's not just the people presenting. I think it's also what we want to call ourselves, you know? So for me personally, I've reflected on this and I'm fine if we lose some of the formality. I will say, and maybe this is very old school and I don't mean it to be offensive, but sometimes in the heat of a meeting, it seems if you're more formal, people pay attention a little bit more. It doesn't feel as comfortable and casual. And it depends, again, what the topic is, but I'm, I'm fine if, if we change things. And a lot of that has to do with where I work and the people that I work with. So I'm very much aware of what this means to people who sometimes don't feel as welcome in different situations. And I think it's part of our, part of our goals and part of our, who I think we want to be as a board to make everyone feel welcome.
Ms. Extell?
If I could just make a comment about that, you don't have to change being called Ms. Barry, if that's what you prefer to be called. It's, it's allowing for everyone to have that option of what they would prefer to be called. So I, I, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, 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 I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't want this to sound the way it sounds in my head. I don't tend to get hung up on this stuff, but I don't want to offend someone. So it's like, I want to, people to feel comfortable wherever they are and however we're treating them. And I think that's what this board wants to do is make people feel comfortable and not make it feel so much like we're sitting at this giant table and they're sitting way over there. All that's missing is we're not elevated.
They're wearing robes either.
Or wigs. Yeah, but, you know, I'll let Mr. Pato speak.
In many ways, I'm less concerned about what we, how we refer to each other and how we ask people to refer to us than how we greet the public. And I think the, I think Ms. Hay is right that while it may take a little more time, especially as we get transitioned into a, a process, letting someone when they come to address us, just state how they would expect us to address them back. I, I, you know, if we were choosing to go informal and refer to each other by first name, I'm fine with that. But I'm not willing to turn around and say someone who's coming to speak to us, I'm just going to by default call them by their first name. It's, I want to give them the respect of, we're listening to your questions and we want you to feel included. I also recognize that when if we, we need a process that is universally accessible, to stretch that term, where everyone who is coming to us is going through the same degree of how do I want to be addressed? Because otherwise we're putting some people into a box and other people not. So as we make that change, I think we need to keep that in mind, that how we choose to go forward provides that degree of level playing field.
No surprise. I'm going to err, err on the side of formality. I think we can strike a balance from both, though I think one of, one of my worries is if we went with the first name here, is it does take down the formality. And I'm not sure that's necessarily a good thing for our table. And I'm not sure that's necessarily a good thing for our table. We are dealing with things such as meeting minutes. We we want to make sure we're capturing, you know, consistent names. We're dealing with people's, you know, we're running a town. We're trying to run it professionally, and I'm one of my fears is that we want to come off that we're taking this seriously and it's it's professional. So I I think from that perspective, I want to keep some formality at this table. That doesn't mean we can't change how we address or ask the public. It will add not a ton of time, but it it does add some time. And I do want to speak for the folks that maybe aren't sort of in the current groove of, you know, this this is all very new, right? I think this non-binary is not something that's brand new, but it's not something that I think if you grew up 20 years ago or especially 70 years ago, maybe maybe a very difficult to understand subject. So we we also want to be sure that the audience understands what we're asking them, right? So if we ask, how do you want to be addressed? That may actually be confusing to someone because they're not, what, you know, what's my address? What what do you want to hear from me? You know, so we want to make sure whatever words we use, if we get on that path, are clearly understood and something that we can come up with that we would also have other boards and committees try to adopt, so we're all sort of speaking the same language. I do agree with Ms. Zaxtel is starting it. Here's a great idea. If we're to make changes, I'll also note that we worked on a decorum policy for the board. And that's going to come back to the board, I think, on the eighth, I hope. That part of that policy is also, you know, us thinking about how we address people, not just, you know, cutting people off from speaking if their time's up, but but all that. I think that can be also in this policy if we can come up with some consensus. So say, now someone else had their hand up, and I care, Ms. Hay.
I was just going to say that to your point, Mr. Lassente, about having this be something that feels new, it's not necessarily new. We're just we're asking in the same way that, you know, nobody's going to refer to me as doctor, but I have a Juris Doctor degree, right? Exactly. I know you do, but this is my point, like, it's something that we could be asked. And there are plenty of people in this community who, more than, you know, any of us can shake a stick at, who have PhDs and not all of them want to be referred to as doctor, but some of them do. So I think actually it is an ongoing act of respect. And we're just going to be able to accept additional options on the list, that's all. So we're not actually teaching anything new. The people who want to be who want a particular title or honorific will give it to us. And, you know, whatever it is. And so I think it actually, I don't I don't think it'll take as much of a learning curve as necessary, except for the people who are not familiar with one of the honorifics that we then become we become used to. And, you know, as far as the the learning curve, we could ask Mr. Miller to put something out and, you know, a little piece of the link to Lexington that says the Select Board is, you know, going to be asking if you come to speak. And as we roll it out to other committees, you will have the opportunity to tell us how you'd like to be addressed. We could even, if we wanted to, put a little sign on top of the agendas when people pick up an agenda. Said, you know, when you please, if you rise to speak, please give us your name, address, and, you know, how you would like to be addressed. And there's also an argument to be made that we don't ask for addresses anymore in this same topic, by the way. That is also something that has come up, that if we are ensuring that we don't make people uncomfortable or a added judgment to anybody's comment, and that can be for another day. But I'm just saying, these same conversations we've had about titles, there is an argument to be made that identifying where you live can be leading to a judgment as well by others. I'm going to have a conversation.
I think that's potentially an idea worth exploring. I do think it depends on the topic and who's speaking and how our public record gets stored. I'm mainly concerned about public record, so I guess it would be topic oriented, perhaps. But, Mr. Paddo?
I was just thinking procedurally, we we could provide a sign up, not a sheet, but a slip. So when if somebody comes to the microphone, they would hand in the slip, so you would have the information. And we would we would lay it out with the instructions, what are we looking for in here?
Yeah, I, you know, and one of my concerns is time. We I don't want our meetings to go longer than than possible. And I think some of that administrative work could cause.
Did Mr. Paddo just suggest a universal?
I I didn't. I didn't finish the comment with regard to how do we deal with people on Zoom.
And and Ms. Hay did mention Zoom, and I I think we want to be careful. I've seen every type of name on Zoom, and sometimes it says House 123 or whatever, you know, this. So I don't want to just use whatever's there. Sometimes it's your spouse that's listed, not you.
But that's actually a great example. When we see, you know, iPhone seven or, you know, House 123, we say, you know, there's someone, you know, identified as House 123 with a hand raised, can you please identify yourself? And it it's the same, it's the same thing. Please identify yourself and, you know, in the same way we would say it for that, we would say it for someone in the room. Identify yourself and tell us how you would like to be addressed. Or how you'd like us to refer to you, in case that's clear.
Any any further comments on this from board members? This was a brainstorming item. I'm hearing some consensus about asking attendees and perhaps presenters how they would like to be addressed. I will ask the board if anyone wants to change how they'd like to be addressed. I do recommend that we change these. I'm going to stick with this one. But if others do not want to be addressed by that title, then they can certainly change it. Any other comments on this, Ms. Zaxtel?
So if I can just ask the board, if it were helpful, I can brainstorm with Dr. Bree about suggestions on how to move this particular thought forward and then bring that back to the board about language. Because the the only worrisome is if you ask someone to identify themselves. That may push people into a, why are they asking my sexual identity, gender identity? So I think using the wording, address, how would you like us to address you? But I can, if it's, that seems to be the way that the board, that's if I'm hearing that correctly, I can speak with Dr. Bree and get her suggestions on other organizations that are going this way, is that?
I think that's fine. I'm not sure we have to talk about it as a board. Maybe that maybe the two of us can talk about that and come up with, and I'll try and make some things out. I'll see how it goes.
And we're really going to be a nerd on titles. I'm just going to tell you one of my drives me crazy. There's no period after Ms. It's not an abbreviation for anything.
Duly noted. Mr. Lassente, can I say one thing, one extra thing? I want to take a minute and thank the board for having this discussion. We've been talking a lot about leadership and really taking accountability and steps, small or large, in this endeavor. And I appreciate the the feedback, the discussion around this, even when sometimes if it doesn't affect us, it affects a lot of the the people that we work with or or serve. And so I just wanted to say thank you for this discussion this evening.
Thank you for bringing it up to me. Okay, colleagues, we're going to move on to our last item on the agenda, which was listed as our second item on the agenda, which is for the board to
Town Report.
Yes, to discuss our Select Board Report for fiscal year 2024. So the town's fiscal year is winding down in six more days. And the board is being asked to prepare for the Select Board submission of our report, which covers July 1st, 2023 to June 30, 2024, for the annual town report. The final report will be due in September, but we really want to get a head start. This is typically a quieter time of year. We don't want to let this slip. And no, no, it's always good to prepare early. So last year, on our 23 town report, we took up topics of ARPA, spending, fiscal resiliency and capital stabilization funding framework, economic development and commercial growth, housing initiatives and updates, infrastructure development, diversity, equity and inclusion. And finally, the town meeting use of virtual technology. We then followed that report up with a report to town meeting where we covered an overview of Select Board goals and actions we took on those goals, reflections on our budget and finance planning, use of ARPA funding, again, the Lexington High School project, social and racial equity initiatives, an update on municipal and school building projects, and an update on recent home rule petitions. And finally, a 250th anniversary of the Battle of Lexington update. So we're trying to assign scribes to different sections, but I thought it would be important that we talk about what sections we may want, if there's any additional ideas. I will note that whatever section everyone ends up with, I did send through Ms. Katzenbach all of the meeting minutes for fiscal year 24 up to June 3rd. I know when I write my sections, I always go back to the minutes, and it's always a painful process to go find each one. So I did everybody a small favor and gave one document, 300 or so pages, but it makes it a little easier to see what actions the board took. So with all of that said, are there topics that folks want to add? Think we should put in things that maybe are different than our typical topics for this year?
I don't think we need town meeting virtual technology anymore.
Agreed. Okay.
So I think there needs to be something in here about the high school building project.
Exactly, as a separate project.
Right.
It should not go in the the part that talks about buildings.
Right, we did make that transition with the report to town meeting, and I think that should continue.
Yeah, I think working off of the annual report topics from last year, I sort of had add the LHS, add the 250 and take out virtual tech.
So so 250 will report on their own, and that's why we took it out of our report last year?
It was in our report
The year before.
Town meeting.
Last year, we didn't do it on the town meeting report. We did it in the annual report. I'm sorry.
No, we did it in the annual report. We did it to town meeting. My point is, I don't think we need to report on 250 in the annual report because 250 will do their own reporter. That's why we pulled it out last year. But we could still do it to town meeting.
All right, so I'm hearing LHS Building Project, no virtual town meeting, and no 250th update.
It's not in there.
Mr. Sandy?
So I know we've spent a lot of time just now just talking about diversity, equity and inclusion. I think this topic was added to our reports when we put a chief equity officer in place and we were trying to address that. So I'm not sure that that, you know, we have a lot of goals, you know, as as you put in the package here, we've got six or seven goals. I'm not sure that we have a a topic in our report on each one of those goals. I don't know that we need to have a topic on each one of those goals. So I don't know, you know, what specific thing we're seeing has happened on diversity, equity and inclusion. So I'm just wondering.
So when I wrote that one last year, I actually spoke to Ms. Shaw about hers, and she reports within the Town Manager Report.
Right.
I mean, we might advocate for her having her own column rather than within under the Town Manager's office.
That's, I don't say the scope of this, but it's a good idea.
So just just to Ms. Berry's comment, so I've I've written the diversity, equity and inclusion thing in many previous. And essentially, my job has been to ask the chief equity officer what to say. And so it might be better to have the chief equity officer just say.
We want to report, I mean, I feel we want to report on things we've decided on and we have been actively working on. You know, I think like the Sharet is a good example, should be called strat, that the initiative to revitalize Lexington Center is probably a worthwhile topic because we did spend a fair amount of time on that particular item. And I don't, and it's under economic development, commercial growth is part where we covered it last time, but we did make, we moved the needle on that one a little.
I think there probably needs to be some sentences here about the Town Manager's retirement and Town Manager's search. Well, the bulk of that's going to happen in the next fiscal year. I think obviously we need to acknowledge his retirement and have something about that. I don't know if that's a standalone or if that's a kind of a message from the chair.
I think I'll put that at the top because I think that's where other things similarly have gone. Sure.
Can I just go back to making sure that there's follow up on your suggestion, Mr. Lassente, that I think it was yours, that Ms. Shaw have a standalone, oh, Ms., sorry, Ms. Berry. I was like, I suddenly, as soon as I said Mr. Lassente, I realized I had it wrong and I didn't know where it came from. But I that should be its own report section. It shouldn't just be buried. Somebody should be able to find that both in the index and as a standalone headline.
Ms. Zaxtel, will you make sure that that maybe is communicated?
I will follow up with the coordinator and ask for that.
Other topics that we want to include, so I'm hearing, not a lot, new topics, any old topics?
Well, what I'm wondering is the third one, fiscal resiliency, including the capital stabilization funding framework. I don't know if that gets more kind of cap, the stabilization funding framework kind of goes under the LHS project. What I'm wondering is kind of like based on what we heard today, and I I'm not really sure if Ms. Koznoff and Mr. Malloy will cover it, but kind of without making it sound too depressing, things looming on the horizon, like, who's going to talk about the PEG thing? Is the CAC going to talk about it in their report? Or should we actually acknowledge, you know, what are some of the bigger nuggets that we're going to be dealing with besides the high school project?
I mean, I think this report is a, I look at this report as a synopsis of what we did versus a synopsis of what we're going to do.
But we also talked about the fact that that problem is coming. And it shows that we're forward-thinking and we're thinking about it ahead of time. And there are a few other problems like that out there that are moving me at the moment.
Mr. Paddo, did you want to?
I agree that, I mean, I think there are major sections where we're reporting on, but there is an element of drawing issues together and pointing the community to concerns or or successes. And, you know, I tried, last year, the the intro section did highlight a few of those kinds of things. And we've typically done that in the past, and I think we should continue to. Question is, does something rise above just the couple of sentences in the intro? And I'm not sure anything's popping to mind at the moment. We could sign the current set and then as things arise, talk about it more.
Mr. Sandy?
Another opportunity for maybe having less in the thing. When I look at infrastructure development, the last report was on Center Street, Scape and Battle Green. So maybe we don't need an infrastructure development section.
Probably not, unless we come up with some new things.
Answer somebody's question, I won't try to identify who. But last year, the Communications Advisory did report on the downward trend in license fee revenue received from the town's three cable television providers and recommended funding of Lex Media, and so it is in here. So I don't think we need to cover it.
So
Except as a trend, I hear what you're saying.
Because if we're going to need to fund it with $500,000 in a few years, we need to throw it out there that this could potentially happen.
Right, and there's a reference to it in there, but I think you're absolutely right that we somehow or other in that we changed that fiscal reporting section to, you're right, it's the the looming challenges.
I think the other reason to kind of put it out there in a sentence or two is because it's not a department, per se. You know, when you think about it, you know, I had to sit here when Ms. Koznoff referenced the budget, go, where do I find that in the in the groundbook? And I'm sitting here searching and scrolling and looking, and I'm like, oh, it's in the Select Board budget, you know? But just so it kind of does kind of fall under us.
Actually, that makes another really good point. Actually, that makes another really good point. Should we talk more in this report about the legal budget? Because we've talked a bit at this table about the expenses related to citizen articles and different things that have really driven up our legal budget in the course of the last few years. And I'm just wondering if that's something worth mentioning.
Town council does have their own report. I'm not sure how much financial data is in that report. Not a bad thing to bring up. It's been a challenging year. So, but I'm worth, worth mentioning. I don't know if it's.
Maybe in that same finance section, but like, I'm just saying, to Ms. Barry's point, that some of these challenges, maybe that's the, the section that we raise a few of these other things.
So it's getting late, so I'll make a funny. So um, so we last, Ms. Hay said something that just that triggered me a little bit, that what we say, what we say, that don't mean the word trigger in a negative way. It's just, it just, it just got me thinking is a better way of saying. And one of the things that happened in the last report is there's a QR code of a video of flying over the center streetscape. So to the extent that challenged folks to think about how we can move out of just a, a written word report that, you know, there, there are a lot of things that maybe there may be videos of that we might want to put in.
Station tour.
Yes.
And I find those valuable. Those, those are great ideas. This is also one of the documents though, that is one of the core documents of our municipality that lives on forever. I do, I would hate to have a bunch of QR codes and URLs that in five years, people say, I can't get anything. Now I have nothing to report on. So I appreciate the idea. I just am a little worried that we want to, we want to.
Okay, Mr. Formal.
Mr. Pato?
No, I was going to say same thing. I've, we would go and read 50 year old reports looking for issues and if we're relying on external references, it doesn't work.
So, so what are the topics? I, I just want to get down to the nuts and bolts because I, I, ARPA is wrapping up and we could certainly keep the ARPA as the last, sort of the last year doing that. Economic development and commercial growth, I think is a good spot to talk about the center. Um, housing initiatives. I do believe we've had a lot still on our plate with Affordable Housing Trust on this. Low Street Project as an example. So I'm hearing those as solids along with the building project and an opening statement about looming concerns, trends, Lex Media, Town Council budget, et cetera. What did I say?
Building project.
Sorry, the high school LHS building project. And I had the fiscal resiliency, including capital stabilization, funding framework that might fit in nicely with the building project though. Mr. Pato?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
All right. So hopefully maybe that can just be one, one topic. So are there any other sections? Cause I'm.
I do still think we need something else on infrastructure. We completed the police station this year. We authorized, you know, the move to um, the police, the, the, the what?
Buildings, right?
Right. No, that, but I'm saying, I think we need to retain that.
Yes, agree.
So we had um, the update on municipal municipal building projects, because the school building projects, we really didn't have any. And then you're going to report on that separately. Okay. Okay. And then any other items? So we have opening
It's you.
project of LHS building project. Priorities uh, for ARPA spending, economic development and commercial growth, update on municipal building projects, housing initiatives and updates. That's it.
So we each got one. I like it. With the opening, you get two.
That's the six total. Last year, the chair only took the opening, I think.
No, you had two.
Did you have two?
Last year we all had.
Is everyone, so all right, let's um.
I'll take ARPA.
Take ARPA? Okay. Thank you.
I nominate Joe for the high school.
Yeah.
That's an easy one.
I nominate you for economic development.
Or if you want to do this.
Maybe I'll do the opening and Joe can do economic development. And then Mark's got your municipal building projects.
Municipal buildings and.
Oh, thank you.
Houses are buildings?
Yeah, they are.
All right. I think we've given it up nicely. Thank you.
I'm very focused.
All right. So that's all. Unless anyone has anything more to add? What's that?
Word count.
Word count. I think just be efficient. As efficient as you can. Okay. Before we conclude this meeting, I'd like to announce that the next scheduled meeting of the select board will be Monday, June, uh, last, ju- July 8th at 6:30 PM. Be hybrid participation. Uh, we do also have a meeting that morning, which is our um, retreat. And um, I hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable 4th of July. A move that we adjourn.
Before we move to adjourn, can I have a mo- a moment of personal privilege?
Yes.
So um, today's only the 24th, but Wednesday is a very significant day in this town for two reasons. One of which is it will be Ms. Hay's birthday, but the other reason is it will be Mr. Lucente's birthday. So it's appropriate that you dressed in blacks. Because it's a very significant number of you that I know you have been struggling with. So on behalf of the board and the entire 34,000 residents plus and a few gray hairs that I can see from this side. Just a couple. Happy birthday. We have all survived. Look, we're better for it. So you will survive too. So happy birthday.
That I don't really want to be in, but.
And happy birthday, Joe.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Okay, a move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.